Is that on?
We'll go ahead and call to order the November fourth, twenty twenty four, regular scheduled meeting of the Switzerland County Commissioners to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval minutes from our October the twenty first, twenty twenty four meeting? Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion to approve the minutes from October twenty first, twenty twenty four.
Got a motion from Jerry, a second from Randy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Approval of claims?
Go ahead and make a motion to approve claims as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion from Jerry, a second from Randy, to approve claims as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Dusty Hunt?
Crew's been doing blacktop resurface patching. They've put down a hundred and sixty-one tons total on Bodie Hill, Corpus Grove, Little Hominy Ridge, Gollion, Cross Road, Glover's Lane, Brownmouth Cardinal, Jackson, Little Doe, and Leatherberry Road. We also resurfaced the bridge deck on Jackson Road that was damaged in a flash flood earlier this year. We done Shelver Birmingham with DRB rock on Garland Road for the D four route. We're still mowing road sides. Crew's been running along on District One. Crew's been covering gravel roads with rock. And on the, the Ford lane, I got a meeting with the homeowner in the back Wednesday at noon, because if we do want to take it over, we're gonna have to see about taking a certain portion of their driveway to get back to flat ground and put it in a toner. Jenny has submitted our last two draws for the highway to home line security for the two thousand twenty-two blood damage on Brown Road and Carpenter's Crossing. She has also submitted our CCMG closeout for Plum Creek, Plum Creek Slide Repair. And truck six and eighteen that we had over Mainland Diesel, we got some bad news on them. So both of these trucks, they're recommended we put new motors in both of them. Truck eighteen to do a new long block with labor and everything, they're forty-six thousand. Truck six, so we got two quotes on this.
Forty, how about a thousand?
Forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-one, forty-seven. And truck six, we got two routes we can look at. But the short-term fix, so it's getting ant freezing the oil. It's either got cracked head or blown sleeve in the cylinder, the number six, I believe it was. So if we do, if they tear it down, redo the head and all that, we're looking at about twenty-seven thousand, but he said that's no guarantee. He said you might get a year, you might get six months, that won't work yet. So the short-term fix for that would be twenty-seven, no guarantee. And then the new long block in it with labor and everything were forty thousand, one hundred and forty-nine, sixty.
What's the difference in the two trucks?
So truck eighteen has got a Cummins motor in it, and truck seven's got a Cat, C seven. They're both basically the same freightliner trucks.
They're both single-axle dump trucks?
Uh huh.
How old?
Truck six, I think is a oh-seven, and eighteen's a oh-nine. They have years on the beat? Yeah, that's truck eighteen.
Have you looked at any good, free?
Yeah, there they are, sorry. Two thousand eight is what truck eighteen is, and two thousand five is what truck six is. Now, what was your question, Jenny?
Have you looked to see if there's any good used trucks out there?
I have not looked for trucks. I tried to find motors. I can't find anything. I mean, there's some on eBay, but I don't know whether to take that gamble or not. There range anywhere from nine to about fourteen thousand used. And the long blocks on these trucks, so eighteen, basically twelve thousand in labor and thirty-three thousand in parts. And I think for the, basically the motor itself is just short of eighteen thousand just for the mother. So everything I've looked at online, it's actually a pretty good price as far as a brand new long block. And I don't know what direction to go on it, but I know whether it's a purchase.
How much is a new dump truck?
The last time I looked, I think they was running between one sixty and higher, but the bad thing with that was it was a year, a year and a half waiting to get any kind of dump truck. Plus they got whatever we decided to buy, that will be out there, the files and all that.
Do we need both of them?
Yep. Yes, the only, the only thing we can fall back on, we still got the three old Chevy trucks that we spread around with, but they're not so big as trucks. And none of them have the chains on them, we have to try to get chains ordered for auto air chains for them.
Do you know how many miles are on these trucks?
I, so truck six on here showed a hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
Ever made miles for a diesel?
I, let's see, that's six, no, it's not, but freightliner. Truck eighteen showed a hundred and twenty thousand.
Really no miles at all?
No, especially for a Cummins. You know, a Cummins, Cummins usually outlasts about anything.
I, I agree with you. And like I said, that short-term fix, they won't guarantee what it is. And the trouble with, especially six, the short-term on it, it's run water through everything on the motor, so even the short-term fix, you're gonna have to have all the injection system, you're gonna have to have turbo, so you're gonna have, that's why it's twenty-seven thousand.
I, personally, I wouldn't spend twenty-seven thousand on it.
Let me ask you, what are we doing wrong maintenance-wise, that we're not getting any more than a hundred and forty thousand miles?
Nothing we could've done, like, it's either cracked head, it, it blows it.
Oh, it's cracked head, we probably had to overheat it, uh huh.
No, the day that this happened, they was down, remember when the, they had to fix the paint and water down there by the old school on Turtle Creek? They had just pulled up down there, got out a truck and set cones out, and they turned around, it was just spilling smoke after he was all, so it, whatever happened, it was letting it affect them. And truck eighteen, basically what happened to it was it had a low oil pressure damage, and it was, we knew it was low on oil, but as I was driving down the road, there's, so on that Cummins on the front of the motor, it's all gear driven, we have a big plate set up on there. Where that compressor goes on there, that plate gets cracked down there, and it started dumping oil as they were going down the road, and once they realized it, it was too late. I mean, the engine attack lights and stuff came on, but.
Truck six with this Cat as a door, and we checked with Roger Christman about it, he pulled it out of the box.
Yeah.
And didn't match it.
Yeah, he had one over there, but it was totally different from ours. And we had a couple other places we checked on motor four, and couldn't find nothing valuable. And like I said, you can find a few of them Cat C sevens online, but again, take that gamble. Not being a.
I'm pretty sure your maintenance budget's blown for a year.
Oh, yeah, and then so. The only possible way I can swing it, and that, that is if I can, if I'm allowed to use it, would be our equipment. We got some left in it for this year.
Yeah, but that wasn't the plan for that.
No, it's, it's not, I agree. But I got smoke in it, and I gotta have trucks.
You by chance know, I know the Commissioners have got almost a half a million of casino revenue rate.
Yes, I don't have an exact amount, no. Nope.
That's probably a mill. Eighteen, that's more than a mill. So your equipment money's already spent. I mean, right?
Well, some of them.
We was gonna do the striker, right? I mean, that's part of it, or something like that.
We got the striker.
We wanted to get the mini.
Mini excavator.
You can't use the ARPA running for that, that has to be specifically for.
We can, we can use ARPA for anything because it's unrestricted. I don't know how much is left, there's only like eighty thousand left in there. Well, two, we're gonna use that two-hundred for blacktop.
So there's ninety thousand. There was ninety-eight thousand, we used eight thousand to buy the Lucas.
That's what it was, eight thousand. Yeah, there should be eighty-something thousand left.
Almost ninety.
And you're right, there is two-hundred and some thousand of what was allocated of a million for, for blacktop.
Cause I was gonna try and pull off that many though.
And I do gotta get specs for tomorrow, I got it lined out for goodness and all that, that we was gonna try to use the rest of that.
Did you ever check with Bobby over there, at Big Reg, and see if he's got any more?
No, I think the mechanic contacted him, but I did not, but I can check on that. But I, I'm pretty certain the mechanic got it from him.
So what you guys wanna do?
I gotta get truck specs. Right, I, I mean.
Those will end time, if we tell them.
They got them in the shop now, but I don't know if they took them out here or not. This was all done.
You said it was both long blocks?
Yep. Yep, and here's our paperwork for it, you know, we're looking.
I, I, I trust you.
Does it have a warranty on the other, you send them by?
Yeah, I think the long blocks will have warranty on them.
Twelve long, maybe only six.
Did we buy those, no?
Yes.
I'm sure we did.
Here's the problem.
And truck six was actually supposed to already been replaced.
Here's, here's the problem, one of them nineteen years old, the other one sixteen years old. I mean, they don't have any miles on them, but you're spending forty thousand dollars on a nineteen-year-old truck.
We bought.
Like I said, they were.
We bought three new ones.
Bought three new ones in seventeen, or eighteen.
Pick your points.
I know.
You can't replace two trucks.
Been high that six years.
Yeah, I bet they're right after I came into the office counting.
We might be able to.
We might be able to buy one and, and fix the motors, the motor in one.
Well, here's something else to think about, even when we decide to get new trucks, we need to get rid of them three old Chevys that we sprayed iron with, so these two trucks, at least one of them, to replace, you know.
At least they're running.
Right, I don't know how, but they're running. And it, and them, they've been good jerks, good old Chevys.
So if we table it for till our next meeting, you can find out what the actual time would. Well, I mean, you're not telling us what kind of warranty we're getting, and you're not telling us how, if they're gonna take till the middle of next year to get them built.
Won't you do this also, won't you get us real pricing on a new truck?
I can, I see if they're available, or not supposed to be available. All right, I'm new.
Um, I mean, we'll have to act pretty quick, because I mean, as long as snow's not flying, we're okay, but.
Right, they don't have any warranties on, or in on this. I know they got warranty.
Yeah, they should have some.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need, I mean, we need an idea of when, when they can have them done, if we did spend the money.
Yeah, I think they can get started on it, like I said, they got them in the shop waiting on our call. Or have them in the shop, I have them.
Probably moving to the back lot then, probably.
Yeah, I mean, we've been messing around with this truck six for.
Six months.
So, yeah, and then get some, see if we can get some quotes on the truck.
Between Rock and Hartland, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna spend some money tomorrow while we do that, I guess.
Some quotes on new truck and warranty.
Yeah, I mean, and if you can find something good use, you know, low mileage, late model less, this.
Runs. I seen the doctor, the wife, and said, it's pretty much for you, I don't know what it is.
Oh, was that right?
Yeah.
That's one of the other ones?
Oh, it is?
That's a good looking truck.
Yeah, it's not good. Might have trucked in the year.
Do you, do you remember what the amount was that we submitted to home line security for the Carpenter's Crossing and Brown Road?
Do you remember Jenny? Um, I think Brown was thirty.
Thirty-something?
Yeah, thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-six, maybe?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
Carpenter's, maybe forty-two?
I thought, I thought it was twenty.
Twenty-five.
I can get you the right one.
Because we had X amount left, the reason I'm asking, and we still got, we still have Bennington sewer that's gotta be submitted once that job's complete, but.
And hopefully Lacy hasn't got back with you yet, and she, we was hoping once she got back, she would give us a total once, once.
What, what, okay, there, there should be around three hundred and some thousand left for the Bennington sewer, if I'm not mistaken.
And wasn't that said, that because we needed more, we could get more, we just have to make the max, two or something like that, or is that wrong?
Not that I remember, they, they originally was only gonna give us seventy-five percent of whatever the cost was, but then they just said, okay, we're just gonna give you a hundred percent, this is the max we're gonna give you, period.
Okay.
And I forget how much it was.
I was thinking they would give us a hundred percent till we hit that max, and then it would be like, even kind of anything like that.
I don't remember that, I'm not gonna say that that's not the case, but I don't remember that.
We can ask the officers.
Yeah.
Just in case we need one, or everybody matches, everybody.
I know that's the max that was approved by whoever at the state level, but.
We can check on that as well.
Nothing under old business. New business, Health Department sewer ordinance. Come on up, Dan.
So basically, how we arrived at this was last year, the state passed a law that disallowed any local health department from making any regulations that are more stringent than the state rules. That left some holes and some areas that were not addressed with that legislation. So with assistance from Indiana Department of Health, they've arrived at this document. They, they basically gave me a template, and then you kinda shaped it to Fitcher County as far as installer registration and holding tanks and numerous things that have never been addressed before in the state. Did you guys have any questions about it, first off?
Just got it.
Lot of definitions and exclamations about holding tanks reconnecting to a septic system, installer registration, penalties and enforcement, and just general requirements for onsite sewage systems.
Who, who enforces, who enforces this ordinance?
Uh, that would be us.
Because under penalties, says any person, firm or entity found to be in violation of any provision of this ordinance and or rule shall be fined not more than twenty-five hundred dollars each day after expiration of the time limit for abating unsanitary conditions and complete improvement to abate such conditions as ordered by the Switzerland County Health Department, so I guess it does say you. And that twenty-five hundred dollars is?
Uh, since I've been here, I've not encountered a situation where I would put fines out there. It's something that I guess I need to look into a little bit more, because I just, I haven't got to that point yet, we haven't had anybody do anything that would require something along that.
Then the only other question, have we incurred? Orders, correct?
Oh, the one you were talking about for Bennington and Moorfield?
Uh huh.
Uh, so the, Alice Quinn is the head of the Residential Wastewater Division at Department of Health. She said that that ordinance that you guys passed last July is in full effect and will not be affected by this in any way, shape, or form. She said that, cause I sent her a copy of that ordinance to look over, and she said that specifically applies to commercial systems. Everything here is totally residential, there's nothing in here that has anything to do with commercial.
So then my only other question is, should this have a, an official ordinance number?
If we're gonna adopt it. Yeah, it should, it should definitely have one. I mean, even though the health department is the one that's gonna be enforcing it, it's gonna be undersourced by counties, it still should have. So, one, the, the other one that I have here, so this one would be eleven, four, twenty-four, six. If you want to give it its own number.
Okay.
But, I mean, there's, there's no place for the Commissioners to sign.
Right.
Right, so.
Oh, I can add that.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming that they can sign it at the bottom, any of them too, but.
Are we under any type of time constraints for?
Um, so here's, like, with holding tank permits and stuff like that, right now, we're kinda in nowhere land, and it's kinda the same way with the septic installer registration. This year, I just asked everybody to go along with things that we were proposing, and nobody gave me any trouble, and, you know, everybody's been pretty easy to deal with from that standpoint. But if we get this, the problem is, you guys have to read it a couple of times, and then we have to send it to the state for final approval, and then it comes back, and then you guys basically re-adopt it again, and I'd like to get it done by.
If we, if we vote unanimously, then it only requires one reading of the ordinance. And there's nothing keeping us from doing that, but I would like for it to be, have an official ordinance number and a signature, and the signature boxes for the Commissioner, that way it just appears, then it's formal, anyway, I guess. But I, but I don't think there's any reason we can't go ahead and take a vote to adopt it and then make those changes, and it just require us getting it signed. And I'm not gonna read the whole thing, um, we'll be here all night.
There's a lot of definitions. I didn't write it.
So, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Switzerland County Onsite Sewage System Ordinance?
I'll second that motion.
Did he make the motion?
I didn't make the motion, I said I entertain a motion.
I thought you said you made a minute. I swear. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Switzerland County Onsite Sewage System Ordinance, pending the formal document, right, setup, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Randy, a second by Jerry, to approve the Switzerland County Onsite Sewage System Ordinance. This ordinance and all ordinances supplemental or amended here to shall be known as the Switzerland County Onsite Sewer Systems Ordinance, and may be cited as such and will be herein, excuse me, referred to herein as this ordinance. This ordinance will effectively repeal any recorded ordinance and any amendments thereto. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. So, if Dan, you can get with Gail, and we can get a formal ordinance, basically letterhead, if you will, a number, a signature block, and then, I'll be in the, in the morning, I can sign it in the morning, and then Randy and Jerry, whenever, I guess.
Thank you, Erwin.
Thanks.
So there's nothing, nothing needs to be done with this water pump that we were worried about?
No, no. No, it's independent, because it's for commercial, it's for more specific to more, Bennington versus residential onsite.
This is the one we got tabled last week.
Next up is ordinance number ten dash twenty-one dash twenty-four dash five, which is an ordinance of the Switzerland County Board of Commissioners requiring the filing of county disclosure form when certain conveyance documents are presented to the county assessor, whereas the state of Indiana requires an Indiana sales disclosure form to be filed when most conveyance documents are filed with the county assessor, and whereas the board has determined that it is in the best interest of the public and property owners of Switzerland County that a county sales disclosure form be filed in other circumstances not presently required by the state. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Switzerland County and the state of Indiana as follows. Switzerland County Sales Disclosure Form properly completed shall be filed with the Switzerland County Assessor for the following additional transactions. Quit claim deeds, even if not serving as a source of title, a transfer for no consideration or a gift, a document recorded to correct a prior recorded document, or a transfer of real estate based upon the filing of an affidavit. When notifying a transfer on death deed, a fee of ten dollars for each parcel listed on the Switzerland County Sales Disclosure Form. If there is a sale price, a fee of twenty dollars shall be paid, paid to the Switzerland County Auditor when the Sales Disclosure Form is filed. Also, a fee of ten dollars for each parcel listed on the Sales Disclosure Form will be assessed. If no money is exchanged, there will be a fee of ten dollars per parcel listed. Sheriff's fees and tax fees will be charged ten dollars. The fee will be deposited into fund eleven eighty-one. I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number ten dash twenty-one dash twenty-four dash five.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number ten dash twenty-one dash twenty-four dash five.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion from Randy, a second from Jerry, to adopt ordinance number ten dash twenty-one dash twenty-four dash five, which is an ordinance of the Switzerland County Board of Commissioners requiring the filing of county disclosure form when certain conveyance documents are presented to the county assessor. which is an ordinance of the Switzerland County Board of Commissioners requiring the filing of county disclosure form when certain conveyance documents are presented to the county assessor. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Next up, time and attendance?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't sure if you was doing or Gail was doing, I'm sure.
Yeah, I will, I will. Um, on behalf of the, uh, time and attendance team, we would like to make the recommendation that, um, we move to attendance on demand for our time and attendance software moving into twenty twenty-five.
Can you, uh, remind us, Pete, what the, I know the cost is fairly minimal, but can you remind us what the cost was and then maybe give us an idea of what the anticipated implementation timing is?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, there's a one-time, non-recurring payment for a project management consultant set up, implementation and training, uh, transitional support and integration support of nineteen ninety-five, and then a three dollar and fifty cent charge per employee, per month for the time and labor management. Um, and that includes clocking in, clocking out, within the time clocks, but, uh, the process as well as PTO management and, uh, admin, attendance policies and incidents, um, shift differential calculations and automated reporting as well as, um, workday, customer support. Um, sixty-five dollars a month per time clock. I, um, I estimated four, but I wasn't exactly sure what the decision would be. Um, my thought is courthouse, highway, EMS, and then I know our health department or Sheriff's, jail, there's all kinds of options to go for.
And those are, uh, biometric or?
Physical time clocks, um, uh, it's actually a nice one. Um, two hundred and twenty-five dollars for a hundred and fifty RFID's.
Badges.
Basic badges, yeah.
So they would swipe at the time clock?
Yeah, they can swipe in and out. We can, we have, we have a lot of flexibility to what we can do as far as time clocks work, but the simplest way is swiping in and out with an RFID.
Or it has an arc over it or?
A unique RFID, I guess. Um, as far as the project overview, um, I kinda talked with Glenn. Glenn is our representative for MAOD. I talked to him a little bit about two weeks ago. And the goal would be six to eight weeks, as fast as we move with everything else. We kind of agreed it's more like a ten, twelve week process. Um, but, yeah, there'd be a lot of backend that we can do, take care of at first. Uh, realistically speaking, I think late January, February of twenty twenty-five, we'd probably be able to have set up room. It'd be helpful. Um, I've, I've made the comment to several people, as far as my abilities to look things up in my position, I don't have that ability right now. Everything I need, I, I mean, I bother Gail once or twice a day at least, as well as Tina. Um, but there'll be a lot of admin, um, things that managers can do, supervisors can do, such as PTO, as most of the supervisors in the county know right now, PTO's tracked on Google sheet that I created in January, or maybe, I don't know. Our battery's running low. Sorry, I'll finish this. Um, but it'll be very helpful along the lines of keeping track of PTO and well as request times off. As you guys know, we do request times off the old fashioned way with paper, and all that can be submitted and approved online, which is.
And, and those employees that choose can download an app to their phone. Is that correct?
I don't think so. It's not an app. You can go to the website. Like, I could very easily get on here and go to my, my Safari on my iPhone.
Okay.
But, no, it's not an app.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a little bit simpler than the last attempt, which the time and attendance team kind of agreed that.
This is just time and attendance. This has nothing to do with payroll.
Payroll.
Overall.
Parish was still.
But, but this still downloads?
Supposedly there's a.